Are we ready? We're ready online?
Hang on one second. Matt, are you going to join the Zoom?
Recording in progress.
Good evening. I would like to call to order the September 22th ACSD School Board Meeting. The current time is 6:30. At this time, I would like to have introductions and we will start with Jason.
Jason Chance.
Steve Cash.
Steve Orzak.
Ron McLeod.
Jess Venable-Nova.
Mary Heather Noval.
Ellen Wieland-Waste.
Wendy Baker.
Barbara Wilson.
Suzanne.
Natalie Glackman.
And a board members online.
Jamie McCallum.
Oh, hang on, I'm going to move Tricia over. We'll get our one-handed bandit over there, just a couple.
Tricia.
Okay, awesome. Next, I would like a motion to adopt the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda with the following corrections. Under G, number two should say redistricting survey discussion. Under H, Policy Committee, the motion to adopt, we are only adopting, moving to adopt C5, C7, C11, C28, C29, D24, and F5. And then under H, it should read just BSBA, not Addison County BSBA.
And I have a second. One second. Okay, any discussion? Jason.
As long as we're talking about corrections, in three under the superintendent's report should say capital improvement planning, not construction improvement.
Okay.
I'll begin.
So we'll add that to the motion. Thank you. Any others? Okay. If not, let's go ahead and adopt the modified or revised agenda. All those in favor of adopting the agenda with the changes so noted by Suzanne and Jason, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you, guys. Next up.
Um, sorry, Barb, sorry to interrupt. I don't believe we had other ACSD staff introduce themselves.
Oh, thank you so very much.
Do you mind if we do that, just for a couple of records?
Yes, yes, definitely. Sorry about that. Why don't we start?
Nellie Palazzo, Assistant Superintendent of Specialized Services.
Sonia Eighthline, Director of Equity Inclusion and Research Effects.
Courtney Brown, Director of Teaching Learning.
Matt Corenti, Director of Finance and Operations.
Bruce McIntyre, Director of Facility.
Jen Providence, Principal Mary Hogan.
Thank you. Thank you for all being here.
And we have Laura.
And Laura.
Laura.
Sure, thank you, Laura.
She's, she's.
Okay, next up is our first public comment period. At this time, I do not see any public, like, in the audience. Is there anyone online?
Unless, can we list anyone who makes public comments?
Okay. So there is no public online or in the room, so we'll move on to a recommendation to approve minutes of the September 8th Board Meeting.
So moved.
A second?
One second.
Any discussion, comment, feedback? Seeing none. All those in favor of approving the minutes of September 8th, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, the minutes have been approved. Thank you. Next up is approval of the ACSD bills, and I'm going to turn it over to Jason Chance.
Okay, so in addition to the general fund warrant amount that was listed in the agenda at $942,891.22, there were two payroll warrants. One dated August 2nd, $973,816.80, and one dated September 5th for $329,611.62. Mary Heather, I'll forward you those amounts in a moment. So we, payroll warrants came to us late, but still were approved, and Suzanne and Ellie approved the general warrants and the.
You didn't last Monday on the 15th?
Yes, on the 15th.
Hey.
So I would like to move, I move that we approve the bills and payroll ones as work.
Second.
Okay. Any questions? Seeing none. All those in favor of approving the ACSD bills, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? The bills have been approved. At this time, I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Baker.
Okay. The report of the superintendent begins with personnel appointments and resignations. I have three for you tonight. I want to call your attention to the appointment of Mary Richards as a general educator. She, she'll be working at MUHS where we have a special educator vacancy. That is a shift in strategy to be able to pull on somebody with secondary literacy, licensure, and experience to be able to fulfill IEP requirements at the direction of the special educators that we do have on the team. So it pulls in a licensed educator in a different manner to try to ensure that we are meeting the requirements of the students on special education payloads, and that's kind of an innovative solution. So we're looking to do that also at MUMS, and that's why you'll see that job posting still up at this point. So those are presented for your approval.
Can I have a motion?
I'll move to appoint Jacob Dion to Technologies and Sports Specialist, Veronica Clintonola, sorry if I messed up your name, paraprofessional, and Mary Richards, General Educator.
Can I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion? Jason.
I'm assuming that the general educator approach is because it's impossible to fill the special educator.
Correct. Yeah, we just do not have applicants for that position or for the position at MUMS, you know, that we're able to work with, and so this is a different strategy. It works, it has worked well in the past when it's been needed, and so we'll give it a try this year.
Others? Okay, are we ready for the question? All those, all those in favor of approving the appointments as identified in the warned agenda, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Any abstentions? Laura and Steve, thank you. Any nays? Get that out of order.
Is there someone besides Jamie online?
Tricia.
Tricia.
Oh, okay. I just kept hearing a second voice, and I don't get to see her.
Yeah.
Tricia. Okay, so the appointments have been approved.
Okay, so we have two presentations for you tonight. One of, the first one is just the sort of beginning of our conversation that happens this time of year regarding budget drivers for FY '27. Matt and I will be at the joint conference between the Vermont Superintendent's Association and the Vermont Business Officials Association.
Close enough.
Okay. Next, this tomorrow and the day after to get more information about, you know, particulars that relate to this budget season. This is just kind of an initial run-through. It does not include tax information and whatnot that you've seen at this time of year before as well. It really just chunks it into just a little bit of where we are, where we are with the spending threshold, you know, just kind of what are we looking like here? We, we are going to ask the board to think as soon as you can in October about a feasibility target that you might have for us as we work from the operations side to build a first draft of the FY '27 budget, so go ahead.
Thank you. As Dr. Baker said, we have cut this presentation down from over 30 slides to under 10, so that clears the way for me to do a whole second presentation. So lots to, lots to discuss tonight. But, you know, the drivers is the kickoff to our budget development process. This is our survey of the landscape and the major factors that exist that are known today that could have an impact on our budget as we're trying to figure it out. One of the biggest drivers is going to be our long-term weighted average daily membership, and that number just doesn't exist right now. It's, it's based off of enrollment, which is a two-year average between last year and this year. It's also based on demographic weighting of students living in poverty, students who are English language learners. It weights by grade level. You might recall all the different weights. So that will be coming soon, and that's certainly going to be something that we are paying close attention to. The state this year has endeavored to try to be earlier with their LTW ADM and more accurate so that it doesn't go through four, or five, or seven iterations before they hit a final amount, because that makes it really hard to kind of, you know, watch the budget roller coaster on you. But just wanted to flag that we're going to play around with some figures later on in the slides that just sort of use a placeholder of kind of where we are in FY '26. There's a ton of Act 73 in the news right now as far as, you know, the future of educational funding in our state. It's a major construction zone. It's a work in progress. There's a lot of unknowns. There's a lot of uncertainty. So we wanted to just acknowledge that in this presentation, but I think that the important thing to remember is that, as written, Act 73 has the power to drastically reshape the landscape, including changing board governance, changing districts, changing the foundation formula, or instituting a foundation formula for the first time. However, the action of that bill is still, or that law now is still two budget years away. So we have this year's budget development for FY '27, and then we have next year's as well to look forward to. So not going to be a lot to talk about here with regards to 73, but we wanted to just kind of set, set this year in the right context. And obviously, we'll be paying attention to what happens at the legislature. What we will have to contend with in '27 is the same thing that we had to contend with when we were writing '26, which is the excess spending threshold. This returned after a hiatus during the COVID years and enacts a double taxation penalty on any educational expenditures, per pupil expenditures, that are in excess of 118% of the state average. So we take the state average, we multiply it by 118%, we add an inflationary factor, which is a New England-specific inflationary factor called the NEAP, and that gives us the threshold. Anything that's under the threshold is allowable. Anything that's over the threshold is taxed twice. The interesting thing, and what's kind of, as an aside, been in the news, or kind of swirling a lot lately, is this notion that capital improvements are included in the excess spending threshold calculation. So there are districts, not ours, but other districts who are facing a tight threshold and the need to make substantial bond-backed capital improvements, and, you know, really up against it in that way. So as we're coming up with what our financial feasibility looks like in the budgeting landscape under current rules, any kind of bond debt or debt service that would come in to the capital improvement planning process would need to fit under the threshold.
88% estimate, what LTW ADM is that based on?
Yeah, it's in yellow because we don't know the LTW ADM yet, but using our FY '26 LTW ADM and the sort of business manager-generated averages of what the state has passed for budgets this year, we got 88%. So just keep that in mind as a grain of salt. That, that's a very, like, back-of-the-napkin benchmark for our position right now, using our enrollment and demographic cross-section from this year, or that was written for this year's budget, and then comparing that to the budgets that passed for FY '26 on average with a 4.2% estimated inflation factor. Okay? So it's an estimate. But the important thing to remember here with LTW ADM, or sorry, with the excess spending threshold, is that there's two things that get you closer to the threshold. One, spending more money, because more you spend, the closer you get to the threshold. That's the easy one. The harder one is if you're losing weight because your demographic makeups are shifting, so you might have fewer students living in poverty, or smaller enrollment, or a different makeup of high school students to pre-K students, any of those factors will lose weight and hence move you closer to the threshold. So both of those things are factors that move you closer, and then the opposite's also true, right? So gaining enrollment, gaining weight, or spending less will move you away from the threshold.
Steve? Over the past few years in general, has LTW ADM gone up, down, or has it kind of fallen?
It's not a very old system, so we don't have a ton of data points. I think we had a small, well, no, we had a pretty significant uptick between '25 and '26 largely due to a error in the data that was generated for our students in poverty factor. So that was a substantial increase. We would expect, and we'll see, I think, on the next slide here, to see, did I even calculate? Oh, this was last year's. The early calculations that I've been jonesing to do because, you know, I wanted to give something, some sort of ballpark, indicate pretty close to a push, right? You know, based on what we've seen, some of the early enrollment data, what we've seen in terms of some of the, you know, economic data, EL data, all those things point towards the needle not moving very much. Certainly not something that's going to be a big swing like we had between '25 and '26. So that's why, even though we are using the '26 number as a placeholder of $15,098 per LTW ADM, we feel like that's close enough to where we might land to ballpark it for the sake of talking about drivers tonight. So that Vermont average came in at 13.9. We add the inflationary factor of 4.2, which is, again, like, that's not finalized yet. That's where it is today. And we get an inflation-adjusted average spending, and we take 118% of that, and that gives us a threshold of $17,107 per LTW ADM. We are currently at $15,98, which gives us that budget tolerance of 12%. The tolerance to increase expense, the tolerance to decrease weight, or some mixture of those two forces. That would also, based on what I said earlier, be the tolerance to absorb bond debt, right? So all of that has to fit in that 12% window, and that's kind of where we're, we're starting from.
Okay, Steve, and then I have a question after Steve.
So the inflation-adjusted average spending, that's, that's the number, and you say that our number is $15,98. Could, could you help me? Because you said we're at 88%. It seems like we're above. We're not at 88%, we're at 100 and something.
Yeah, the, the number that we're at 88% of is the 17, Steve, so that's.
Oh, so we're 88% of the penalty threshold?
Of the threshold.
I understand.
Man, so a couple of years ago, when we implemented the other changes to the weighting, basically, they, for districts that lost money, basically, it was phased in over time. So what, where are we? Is this the last year?
You're talking about the discount, the tax rate discount?
The tax rate. No, okay, the tax rate.
We cut taxes out of this one, but.
Okay, forgive me.
I can tell you that in year, we're in year three. Year one, we had a 13 cent discount. Year two, we had a 10 cent discount. Year three is an 8 cent discount, goes 20% down each year.
Right.
So we're, we're at 8 cents.
Yeah. Thank you. Sorry.
No worries. Good question. That's kind of where we're at with LTW ADM. Now we're looking at, you know, what else is going on in the landscape. So major drivers and considerations is a concise statement of the things that we spent more time on in the past, but, you know, should, should feel familiar by now enough to sort of, to go through them just on one slide here. We're always looking at healthcare costs as a major driver. You know, we've heard some murmurings that we could see the rate increase come in in single digits. I wouldn't be surprised if it didn't. I wouldn't be surprised if it did, so there, there's not a lot of confidence in, in that right now. We're in a wait-and-see. Wage increases and negotiations, so we have three different major groups of wage that we think about within the ACSD. We have our two bargaining units, the union ESP support staff, and then the licensed professional teachers bargaining unit, and then we have the non-union bargaining unit. And so we start with what we know. We know that the teachers are not negotiating this year because they're in the third year of their three-year deal, looking at a 3% year-to-year increase in wages. We know that there are negotiations scheduled to, likely to occur in the fall with regards to the support staff, and so that number will be a matter of negotiations. And then we generally have the non-union split in terms of salary and hourly folks. The salary folks generally stick pretty close to wherever the teachers bargaining unit winds up, and the hourly folks generally. winds up, and the hourly folks generally stick pretty close to where the support staff wind up with a few outliers and exceptions. Last year...
I have a quick question.
Oh, sure.
Did you say that healthcare costs could be greater than 10%?
I meant to say less. Did I say greater?
No, I think you did say less, but there's a future slide where it looks like it's, anyway, okay, it's less. That is meant to be less.
Yeah, yeah, and I think, again, there's not a lot of certainty in there right now, but that's kind of the ballpark that I feel like I can say it won't be 20. And that's the increase over the years. Yeah, year-to-year premium increase. Last year, we unveiled this block budgeting concept, which takes our traditional cost centers and mixes them up a little bit into a different model. The top two blocks, Block Six and Block Seven, Block Six is all about student opportunities, and Block Seven is about equity investments. So there's, you know, several million dollars between those two blocks of funds that are invested on behalf of the ACSD, creating student opportunities and creating investments that are designed to achieve equitable outcomes. Those are considered in designing the budget because they are, they're, I don't want to say optional, but they're variable in a way that some of the mandatory blocks are less, less variable. Capital improvement planning, we've kind of touched on that already, and, you know, just remembering that there's this strange needle between, you know, trying to maintain local control over the next couple of budgeting years, but knowing that the existing law doesn't have a ton of tolerance for taking on a lot of debt at this time. So, you know, that's something that we're going to be considering for sure. We have the strategic plan, which I think is in year four, three, will be four? We're in three, heading into four?
It's the second year of implementation.
Second year of implementation, okay. So '27 will be the third year of implementation. And, you know, obviously, within that strategic plan are the potential for new investments, new expenditures, new direction strategically. So that's something that will be considered in the budget. And then the last one, based off of the operating scenario in FY25, likely not to have any projected surplus to designate to reserves in FY26. One of the things that FY25 had to contend with was some extra budgetary activity in the alternative programming. We ran our two ACP programs despite the collaborative that we were in with Addison, Northwest, and Mount Abe falling apart. We were able to collect some revenue from those programs to offset the expenses from tuition and from the funds that we had budgeted for our third of the costs, but it still left a pretty significant shortfall of approximately $600,000. And then we also started up another alternative program at 208, which is continuing to run, and that happened outside of the FY26 budgeting, FY25 budgeting process, and it was a bottom-line expense for that reason. So those things happened in funds outside of the general fund, but in order to reconcile the negative balances at the end of the year, the general fund had to absorb them, which takes what starts off as a positive fund balance of about $300,000 from the FY25 and turns it into a general fund shortfall of about $900,000. The reason for that is that in FY25, we designated the FY24 fund balance of about 1.2 million to go to capital reserves. So that is a voter-approved transfer. It has to happen. We have to send at some point this year 1.2 million dollars into capital reserves. That's FY24 moving in FY26. That transaction can happen on June 30th this year, and it's likely to occur around then, because that keeps the money in the bank for liquidity and, you know, for the purposes of kind of maintaining our operating ability throughout the year and not hitting any kind of cash flow crunch. We estimate that based on the way the FY26 budget was constructed, that it's likely to sort of wash the balance and level everything out heading into, you know, the end of this year. That's obviously something that we're going to be considering when we write '27 and, you know, monitoring throughout the year for updates. Any questions on the major drivers?
Jason.
When will we know about healthcare costs in the...
This bit usually, I can't remember if they do like a preliminary, but I, and I'm trying to remember what they said at the last meeting. I want to say November, if not early December. I feel like it kind of comes out around the same time as the yields, a bunch of these big budget building blocks start popping out at the same time. So keep you posted when it does. We've got a few minor drivers. Again, a lot of these are kind of brushed off year-to-year because they're known constant drivers, right? So we're always paying tuition to UPK. We don't set the rate for that tuition, so it's likely that if the rate increases, we'll have to spend more. We're obviously budgeted for a certain amount, so if the budgetary amount exceeds what the need is on a given year, we might have enough surplus in that cost center that we don't need to necessarily drive a major increase there. But, you know, again, we wait and see. Same thing with the career center tuition. Their rates go up, our costs go up. And then in the opposite direction, we have the ability to set our tuition rate for students that come to school in ACSD, especially from White River. Hancock, Granville, and Rochester is our major tuition generation zone. Based on how our expenditures look, how our budget looks, we get to set a rate. It has to be constrained by, you know, certain things that tie it to feasibility, and, you know, we're obligated to give back anything. If we charge too much, we have to give it back. So we try to be pretty accurate with our tuition setting, but in the past, we have been, and it's ticked up, you know, a couple percentage points over a year. Other insurance things, so, you know, besides healthcare premiums, we have a premium that we pay for general liability and for workers' comp. Those generally tick up a few percentage points every year. We were lucky to renegotiate our transportation contract for an extension rather than, you know, having to go back out to bid with Betches. So they gave us a two-year extension at 3% both years, which is, which is the maximum that they could do it under the current bid law, but it's, I think, a good deal for us in the market to, you know, have a year-to-year contract over $1 million, get renegotiated under the rate of inflation. So it feels like we're in a good spot there. And then, of course, you know, just trying to, as we're negotiating this really complex web of capital improvement planning and potential construction initiatives down the road, trying to keep our buildings, you know, well-maintained, in good working order, and free of any surprises. And, you know, as we head into heating season and boiler season and, you know, all the things, it's always one of those things that we just cross our fingers and hope that we've got enough money in the budget to contain whatever expenses inevitably come down the road. So, and, you know, if the roof blows off the high school, insurance covers it, right? And so the worst-case scenario is always an insurance claim, but there's a lot of ground that's in between the worst-case scenario and the routine costs of upkeep on, you know, maintaining our nine buildings. So that's what I'm talking about there. And that is it. Okay. And we ask questions throughout, so there shouldn't be anything. Thank you.
Any questions? Thank you so much, Matt.
You're welcome.
Okay, thanks, Matt.
Thanks.
So the next thing on the superintendent's agenda is the capital improvement planning, and I think someone's queuing up another slide presentation. There we go. This is a four-person show in that this is work that we're doing together from the operations side and the governance side. You know, the facilities committee from the board is actively participating in helping to get all this work done. You know, Matt from the finance side is coordinating and doing a great job in coordinating with our architect's office and the facilities committee to make sure that we have all these pieces, and the school leadership as well to try to pull these together. Bruce, of course, as our director of facilities, knows the facilities, knows their history, knows their maintenance requirements, you know, has worked with TruXCollins through the last 14 years, I think you said, right, that they've served the district, and so that's really helpful. Jen Kravitz is here tonight as the building leadership. We have tried to work collaboratively to determine, you know, what is needed in each of these buildings and what does that really look like. So Mary Hogan is the first on our list. We will be doing basically this presentation with all of the buildings in ACSD, and we will be doing them in order of perhaps when you could digest them based on the size of the conversation in the building. You know, that's something that the executive committee will continually review as they set the board agenda, but you'll see some of that sprinkled out of your draft work plan. And also, we will do them in a manner that tries to take into account all of the ambiguity that we're all experiencing, you know? So, you know, one of the things that you'll see us speak to a little bit is, okay, well, what might Mary Hogan be able to absorb enrollment, and what would that look like? That's an example of looking at things now and then thinking about, you know, what might we need to contend with as we move ahead. The last thing I'll say before, I think Jason has the next slide, is remember, this is a capital improvement plan that's required by the Agency of Education. So they need us to say, based on our buildings, what might we plan to tackle over the next five years? And approximately, how would we arrange that, and what would that look like? Obviously, as we gear up and thinking about our facilities across the state, those investment numbers and whatnot are really important for us to look at. So what we're hoping for is feedback from the board around what you hear, whether there are questions, you know, or things that you appreciate or things that you'd like, and we'll be doing that with each of our buildings. So that's, I think, enough by context setting, you know, and then Jason's got the first slide.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Kravitz. So this is our first introduction to the board of the capital improvement planning process for Mary Hogan. This is part of what we are calling Process A of capital improvement planning, which includes the Middlebury schools. Process B is all non-Middlebury schools. So this work kicked off in August of 2024, when the board authorized the facilities committee to carry out Process A. Tonight, we're going to talk about building data for Mary Hogan. We're going to talk about the process that we've gone through with Mary Hogan administration, architects, and facilities committee and administration, and what the result of all that process was in terms of space needs and programmatic needs at Mary Hogan. Talk about the proposed capital improvements that would address those needs, look at some drawings of those improvements, and then talk about some very rough cost estimates at this point. So I think Bruce is next.
Great. All right. So Mary Hogan was constructed in 1954. That construction included A Wing and B Wing. And then in '66, C Wing was added. In 1984, they did E Wing, the first part of it, and then in 2001, they extended E Wing back behind the building, added, redid the gym, and added on administrative space from Bay Wing.
The library, too?
Yes, the library was part of that. Actually, the library was redone. The library was part of the 1984 construction. But, yeah, they did totally redo it in 2001. Currently, the building's 72,000 square feet, which is slightly larger than the middle school and about less than half the size of the high school. Currently, the building enrollments around 350 students, you know, K5, and then there is a pre-K program. The capacity with the proposed improvements goes to 390, so that gives us a little headroom, but we anticipate, you know, maybe some development in Middlebury coming soon, so. And then recent capital improvements, most recent was in 2024. We utilized some COVID funding along with some district funds to renovate the A Wing. That renovation was primarily for heating and ventilating, and it was targeted because the A Wing had poor ventilation, which was identified during COVID when we tested all the buildings. And so that was the lowest ventilation in the building, so that was the first target. And when we did that, we ended up having to run ductwork that required new ceilings. If you redo the ceilings, you have to redo the lights. We looked at the flooring and said, if we're going to put new lights in here and redo the ceilings, we should at least paint the walls and put new flooring in. And so we did all those things, and it actually turned out beautiful. So if you haven't been in the A Wing at Mary Hogan, you should go. And then I worked with TruXCollins to go through all updates that have been done since 2019, because that's when they went through and did their initial report for the school. And we took out anything from the report that had already been done, and we took another look at priorities one and two and made sure that they fit the description of a priority one or two. There were a few twos in there that actually, in my opinion, were in the three category, and we moved those. And so that's why the number that you'll see later in the slideshow looks a bit different than what the report says.
Thanks, Chris.
Jason, can you see who's got this slide?
You do.
Okay, I thought so. I didn't want to... I can't see on the screen. It's in the slideshow. What have we done so far? So we tried to figure out, how can we make this a multifaceted approach? We knew that 2018, 2019 gave us the data, the facilities condition index data that yielded the facilities master plan, a very objective study of the brick-and-mortar of each building, including, you know, deficiencies in the brick. It was like literally, here's a crack in the side of the building, right, down to the nth degree. And so we kind of had that data already built, obviously with the modifications to make it current that Bruce was talking about, but the real focus here was on the programmatic side of things. How does the facility interact with the programmatic vision of the school's leadership, of identified pinch points or issues with the building relative to educational programming, and, you know, what mattered to the people who really use the buildings every day to do the good work of educating kids? So we started by sending a detailed and location-specific questionnaire to each school leadership, and that was, you know, either sort of captained by the principal, but a variety of different configurations of leadership team. As those questionnaires came back, we reviewed the responses with each school's principal. That was usually David Epstein, who's our lead architect, the principal and I walking through the building, looking at a map of every single room and making sure that we had the usage correct, making sure that the history and the program were told correctly so that as they were heading into their conceptual design work, they had all of the right information. And that kind of launched them into their initial concept design phase, where we passed the torch and we said, you know, given everything that we have spoken about regarding the programmatic needs of the building and the interface between the facility and educational program, design a concept for us. And so that's kind of what takes us to this midpoint today. And what's to come is to review the concepts that we've got to show you today and to start the refining process of getting those down to where we feel comfortable ultimately placing them in a five-year capital improvement plan. That's how this whole thing started. That's how it's going to finish. In doing that, we will also, you know, go through the steps of getting pricing drawings and cost estimation done and potential project budgets. But the end of this project is the capital improvement plan. At the end of the capital improvement plan, we'll also have what we need to then, you know, pursue it in a direction towards school construction, but that would be a whole different plan, right? So this is just for the sake of making a five-year plan, and... And so here's another sort of detail of where Mary Hogan has come along those lines. 525 is where we first sent out the questionnaire. And I'm not going to read every one of these. But FCA, Facilities Committee, you can see there's a lot of iterative work that's happening here where, you know, the building leadership is supplying the information. The facilities committee, in collaboration with the architects at pretty much every meeting, is doing some reviews, passing comments back, redoing documents and kind of working iteratively towards that handoff. And so that sort of led to this process of feeling, I think David Epstein probably asked me 13 or 14 times if we were substantially complete and like launched, right? They really wanted to make sure that they had all of our input. Anybody who could possibly weigh in was given every opportunity to do so. And that sort of led to the changing of phases there. So am I still going?
No.
Okay.
No.
Passing.
Yeah, yeah. So, you know, as Matt is saying, the school teams really looked at what are the program needs of the building? What does that look like? So Jen invited her staff to have input, you know, on the various aspects of the building and what it looked like. And these four points up here really are probably highlights of that kind of conversation. So a lot of the staff concerns relative to condition came up in the C Wing, which was no surprise to our facilities team because that has not been redone in the way that A Wing has. And that just feels like an area of Mary Hogan that needs refurbishment. So that was noted. Also, I think one of the things that between Jen and her team's work and David's experience, which was very helpful, he had us really think about how does a school need to be organized in order to provide the programmatic things that we want to provide? And so, you know, that led to clusters of grades so that K1 is in one wing and 2, 3 is in another wing and 4, 5 is in a third wing, along with the support services that go along with those students. And that really felt like a refreshing concept and a way forward that really made sense, I think, to people in the building, to the facilities committee, you know, as well as those that just support this work, and to the architects. So the new configurations that you'll see, also, they do allow enough space for four sections per grade, which in order to achieve that, we would need about 50 more students, you know, in order to achieve that reliably. Right now, you might remember that some of the grades at Mary Hogan have four sections and some have three sections. It just depends on the bubbles of enrollment that come through. This would allow us to have four sections per grade, which allows us to accommodate about, it takes about another 50 students in order to hold that and sustain that, you know, as we've considered it. So that can come either because of, you know, C30 changes that are made in a revised policy or a housing development that has 50 students or any number of other, you know, options. But that's what it would take basically to be able to hold that. And there's also a noted strong programmatic preference for classrooms at the K3 level that are 50 square feet. Some of them are closer to 35 square feet. So it's just make sure that we have classrooms that are big enough, you know, for grades that rely particularly on stations, you know, as they move through. I did not ask Jen to prepare anything for tonight, but I want to give her the opportunity to talk about their good work. Is there anything you want to say, Jen, about just the process or things that kind of came out of it for you before we go into the drawings that they came up with?
Yeah, it was a pretty tight turnaround. So we did get some faculty feedback in the spring in the faculty meeting, you know, and it was offered. I think for me, the most helpful thing was meeting twice with David Epstein with the actual plans on the building. And we like literally went through every single room to think about like, what is the room? What would be the ideal setup? You know, it's not like, it was, and like, what does it look like? Because like the gym is being, the two gyms are being, need to be used. And is that limiting because there's a cafeteria? And so, which is really interesting and pretty intense, but like very thoughtful way of doing it with, you know, Matt and Bruce and walking through the building and helping, you know, David understand like what does it mean when I say we need like a space for gross motor movement and regulation? And what did that look like? And so I think that that was, it felt like in the design process for me, it felt really powerful to have the people who are thinking about the design of the building actually understand how it's used and not just like from a theoretical lens and understand why. And that felt great, actually.
And, I mean, your team did a great job in thinking all those things through, you know. So this feels like an informed piece that we're coming to. For the next slide, go ahead.
So was this the driver? Because not that long ago, there were more than 400 students at Mary Hogan. And now to hear that the capacity is down to 390, is that because of the revisions in how the space is being used? Or, because Mary Hogan hasn't essentially changed its footprint, but now all of a sudden it has less capacity. And I'm kind of curious as to why, what's driving that?
Do you want to address? Yeah, I can respond. From the facilities committee who specifically said that, similar to some of the cost driver conversations, that as your square footage per student goes up, your capacity goes down. And it's really in part that shift from 35 square feet per student to trying to get up to 50 square feet per student and that pulling downward on the capacity.
And I would say that's a thing I really advocated for in a way that, because I, just thinking about like the programmatic work and the work that we do in the curriculum and instruction. Because I think that K through, you know, like those youngest grades are really using space differently than fourth and fifth grade, which is developmentally appropriate.
And also two pre-K classrooms now, right?
Yeah.
Which they weren't before.
And we also have an alternative education program within the building that didn't exist prior to this. And I think we were, my first year, we didn't have access to spaces where kids could regulate and calm their body through like sensory and motor movement. And we found them pretty powerful spaces for kids to utilize. And so do they need the whole classroom space? No, but having a space to be able to do that feels important. But all of that takes space. You could choose to go back up, but there's like, you don't get that.
Trade-offs.
Right.
Yeah. Bruce, I think this slide is yours.
I think so. Next slide.
No, this one.
Oh, this one's mine? Oh, okay. All right.
Or I can do it. I think I might have it.
I think this was yours.
You can see that they're on their toes, you know. I can't see it in Slideshore.
So for the three Middlebury schools at least, we'll see these bubble diagrams that are sort of the first introduction to the concept. And this shows the sort of idea of a two-grade cluster, which, you know, is obviously repeated three times throughout the building, K1, 2, 3, 4, 5. In this model, you can see that there's two grades and that they're separated by a suite of six rooms. There's a special education room, a calm room, a break room, a meeting room, TPA.
Teacher planning.
Teacher planning, and then a storage room.
The break room is for students. It's a student space.
It's like the calm room.
It's like a, yeah, it's a place where kids can reset when they're disregulated.
So part of the concept is including these six rooms in a cluster for each of the three wings. And, you know, having those rooms and the services offered in them available sort of closer to the classroom versus sort of in a standalone area of the building. One of the things that you can see here, A Wing's recent renovation kind of marks it as done for this next wave of capital improvements. The C Wing needing HVAC, needing windows, flooring, ADA, doors, is in a much better position to absorb square footage because there's not going to be much of it left during the renovation, right? So I think that that was a big part of like deciding that that is the area of the building that's in the best position to be expanded on. And then you'll see from the schematic as we get into it where some of the other square footage additions were largely to sort of allow this middle cluster of service suite to be added to each hallway so that they're all equal.
This is my slide. This is my comfort zone. I can get up here and point. Okay, you can ignore the colors. That was from a previous layout that the architect did. And that was just to try and help them determine how the space is being used currently. So it doesn't have any bearing on how the space will be used. However, they did letter or number, sorry, so, letter or number grade. So like kindergarten section, you have four K classrooms here, four first grade classrooms.
And that is the C Wing.
And that is the C Wing. And so this hatch area would be bumping out the C Wing. Because of the way the C Wing is currently, the doors are narrow going into the rooms. And so you need to rip out the hallway walls and doorways in order to correct that. And so that, like Matt said, that's why this is kind of a targeted area. We're already going to have to do some really heavy renovation in that wing. And so that's the reason for setting it up this way. And this is like the ideal design. So you have your services clustered in the middle between the two pods of grades. And that's how, if we were going to redo the whole thing, we would do all three wings like that. But since we're not, that's the ideal model. For A Wing to achieve the same configuration with services located in the wing, we would add some square footage at the end, which would accommodate that.
And you wouldn't have to reopen renovations that just happened, right?
Right, yeah. We wouldn't have to disturb any of the work that was just done by doing that. So we're not ripping out something we just did to redo it. And then we have a little bit of space up front.
Conference.
Conference room, yeah. That's something they will lose currently. The yellow room is currently being used as a conference room. So that would shift to the front of the building up by the office. And then in the other part of the building, it's really just, there's no new construction in the rest of the building. It's just kind of reconfiguring how things are used.
A little bit of storage in front of the gym.
Ah, yes, there, yes, we are shy on storage. So there would be an addition of some storage right on the front of the building on the gym. And that would help to alleviate some of the pressure when they transfer from PE to lunch in that half of the gym. Yep.
That's a good question.
Yeah, absolutely.
So the idea of having the support services in each kind of pod of two grades?
Yes.
Then can you explain the difference between those support services and the support services wing over by the gym? Or is that an older?
Okay, that's the B Wing, that's existing classrooms now. And then, yeah, well, that's.
Those are alternative classrooms, Jen, right?
No, I think I just blew this up. So one is like a sensory space. One is for curriculum coordinators and instructional specialists, which currently have our wing, like they're saying moves. And then one is for interventionists. You know, so it's basically, I think the goal is basically to have folks who need to be in the middle of the building who go out to all the wings, be centrally located, as opposed to like right now, our interventionists are at the end of C Wing. And so to get to fifth grade, it takes, like, it's just inefficient. Like you're wasting time moving, basically.
Thanks. Any other questions about the floor?
Also, there's a, you know, improvement to the cooler and freezer in the kitchen, which.
Yeah, I mean, that needs to get done.
Regardless.
Regardless, yeah. We're putting a fair amount of money into fixing and preparing that data.
And the preschool rooms, are those being altered or changed or?
No.
The school, I think, will stay where it is.
I think that in an ideal world, you would put a bathroom into both rooms. And that is hard to even say.
Then we hadn't gotten down to that level of detail yet either.
Right.
So this is like a Google Maps view of the building. And then the blue spaces represent the added square footage. So you can kind of see how it, how it changes the footprint of the building. It's not as hard, it's not as easy to visualize when it's a blueprint. It's easier to understand how it's going to change it. Any questions? So this was the cost opinion developed by the architect using a professional cost estimator based on current, you know, current year construction costs. So these numbers do include soft costs, which means permits, architect fees, that type of thing. So, you know, when you think about building something new and you see here, they've listed a $960 square foot price, and you go, oh, wow, I can build a house for a lot cheaper than that. Yes, you can. But it also wouldn't meet school regulations and have all the proper permitting and safety systems in place. So it is, it is kind of eye-opening to see that number, though. Makes for easy math. Figure $1,000 square foot, you're pretty close to, you know, you can easily figure out how big a high school you want. And then the renovations, they typically do 80% of new construction costs just as a formulaic way to come up with that. Certainly, once you dig into the work, that can be refined.
Are there big tickets on the deferred maintenance that you could speak to?
Sure. There are a lot of ADA things related to, you know, cabinetry and mill work. Sinks aren't accessible by wheelchair. A lot of that mill work's actually just in pretty poor condition. The most recent renovation was in 2001. So those cabinets are in the best shape. And then there were other things in the deferred maintenance that I actually pulled out. They had asphalt in front of the building. And I said, well, that's really outside of the building envelope and we'll leave that off of the deferred maintenance list. When we went through, there were, we just went line by line from their report. And so, you know, the lighting was knocked down by the amount of square footage from the A Wing because we redid all the lighting in the A Wing. So we've adjusted things to represent today's condition. Just on the deferred maintenance list, there were circulating pumps for the building. Well, this summer, we just put in new high-efficiency circulating pumps. So that came off of the list. And so all those things that we took off the list helped improve the facility condition index, which is not on this slide.
It was on the header.
It's on the other ones.
It was 12%.
12%, which is fair. And that's not what the report said when it first came out. Yeah, so we have, we've accurately updated that. And again, these numbers are just very high level. You know, this is your 30,000-foot view.
Mary Heather has a question.
Yeah, just, I can't remember actually from the facilities committee meeting, but do the projected numbers for deferred maintenance, do that also include like camera or security work? I don't remember if it did.
It did. We currently have, you know, cameras and we currently have access systems that are aged. So yes, those items are in that deferred maintenance. So yes, those items are in that deferred maintenance.
And the other thing I just wanted to point out, it's in, it's in the small print there too in the notes, but that the deferred maintenance really only focused on priority one and two items, nothing else.
That's correct.
That was what I was going to ask, thank you.
Yeah, that's correct. And when we did our editing, we, anything that really didn't land squarely in one or two, we moved out. There were a couple of items in that original report that were questionable as to whether or not they were a one or two. So anything like that, we did shift to column three.
Any other questions?
Great. Jen, is there anything you wanted to make sure is highlighted that you haven't heard?
I'm not the comprehensive.
Well, I would like to thank the facilities committee, Bruce, Matt, Jen, you know, for doing this work and the diligence that has been put into this and really scrupled that list, which I used to harp on a long time. You know that, right?
It needed it, yeah.
So thank you so much.
I do have a question.
I'm so sorry.
No, it just occurred to me. Do we, when we say deferred maintenance, do we have a time threshold on how long it's been deferred? Is it going back to when the state stopped paying for school construction? Is it?
It really depends on what the system is. It's hard to generalize it because anything that's related to safety or wellness, we try to, we'll do it right out of our operating budget. You know, but the, so deferred things really are going to be like the millwork, door hardware, you know, things that we can.
Windows.
Windows, although we've done a lot of windows in Mary Huggins.
A little bit of roofing probably.
Yeah, there's roofing. Things that we can patch without it being too noticeable. You know, but mechanical stuff, heating and ventilating, when it breaks, we fix it.
Yeah. I'm just thinking about how long we've had to defer the maintenance because the state stopped paying for school construction costs.
I think we defer a lot more than we used to because of that, yes.
Which was 2007, that was the last time.
Yeah, coming on 20 years.
Right. And the life expectancy of a lot of systems is right around 20 years.
Yep.
I know this is like a fairly large number to look at, you know, $20 million, but we spend roughly 10% of our budget every year maintaining our facilities. And that number is really high because of all the deferred maintenance. So you could certainly make the argument that it would actually be cheaper to spend less money each year and make strategic investments in buildings to lower our annual maintenance.
Yeah, for some reason, the architect's favorite chart to show everybody is how if you just build a new building, you'll save yourself money in 30 years.
So, and I would offer that the heaters in C Wing in multiple rooms break often every year, including in the winter, and we're using space heaters.
That's bad.
So.
Not ideal.
Just not great.
I think our purpose tonight is really to sort of get your feedback, get your feedback on the information. This is the first presentation, that's helpful. Also, just what other questions, you know, what other thoughts? How are you hearing this? What do we need to take away from your listening and thinking about this for the first time that's on top of mind? That's really, there's not a lot of pressure on you as a board tonight, you know? It's just giving some feedback top of mind for the, you know, the team to take into account, knowing that the end product is going to try and take all of this information and put it into sort of a reasonable five-year prioritized list. But we're not ready to do that right now. So we are interested in your feedback.
Steve?
Yeah, I'm very encouraged. I mean, Mary Huggins has been around since the 50s and it needs this. And I know that the voters that I talked to in Middlebury, they're going to be very pleased that it's going to be getting the attention that it deserves. And I'm very excited about the thoughtful way that it's been done, especially with, often when we see budgetary considerations, it's not with kids in mind, but this was clearly initiated with the educational purpose and how instructionally the space will be used. You know, and a building that was built in the 50s wasn't built to modern standards. And I am so glad to see this happening in such a thoughtful and responsible way.
Jess?
Yeah, similarly, I just, the way that it was put together is super accessible and understandable. And I'm really excited to see it for all the other buildings and just like impressed overall with, yeah, the student-centric, human-centric approach. Yeah, so just really grateful.
Anyone else?
I'd love to see if it's like a, to have a copy of it to look at closer. But I agree with what's been said so far. A little sad to see that addition where that beautiful mural is right there. You know, you got to work with what you got, right? Yeah.
Mural, new murals can come along.
Absolutely.
We can design the next wall with the mural in mind. You know, the substrate will be maybe more appropriate for that.
So I think this is in the meeting materials, correct?
No.
No, it's not.
It is in your.
It is in your.
Oh, okay.
So what I would like us is to revise the meeting of materials so that anyone going in will have access to it.
Yeah.
I mean, one other thing I will point out, and if you could bring up kind of the total cost. On that one, TruX Collins did point out in those renovations, just that that drops the deferred maintenance cost because those are addressed with the renovations. And so kind of built into that renovations number is that deferred maintenance cost for all those areas that would get addressed by renovations. They also pointed out that renovations might be a term I could use a bit more depth because I'm not sure exactly how they would characterize it. I characterize it as like getting down to the studs of the building as opposed to, you know, just putting paint on things and stuff like that. But it's really pretty thorough, a lot of what is under that renovations heading.
Could the facilities committee remind the rest of the board what the timeline is on? Because this is part A of the capital plan, right? The Middlebury schools? So where, where are we on the timeline for the non-Middlebury schools?
We just solicited our first set of feedback from building administrators for the non-Middlebury schools. So we saw the first view of that last week, pretty early in the process still.
And the work plan that we'll be looking at a little bit later has targets for when we would be covering each of the schools.
Which are not necessarily built around at the moment. All Middlebury first, you know, in part because there's a lot of complexity around some of the other buildings in Middlebury. And so it's hard to add that on top of some of the other things. And so it might be easier to put another building somewhere, you know, with your other agenda items. So it's designed for you to discuss in relationship to how you can absorb all this information with all the other things that you're doing at the same time. Yep. The, I think what is, is really encouraging is that we have a process now and that, you know, that we've worked through. And so Matt is supporting the other building principles to kind of come through it. And then, you know, the facilities committee will look at it. The architect knows what we're looking at. We'll use this template as our presentation template and work through it in that way. So that it's, we've had some go slow to go fast, you know, as we've begun with our first three schools, you know, in Middlebury. But I think we're, we're moving through it, we'll move through the rest of them in a different pace, I think. So it's taken us a while to, to just determine how in this vein, we would like to work with the services of the architect, given the different approach that a number of you have noted, you know, in terms of thinking about pulling it, starting it within the buildings and around student programming and how do we do that? Especially how do we do that in relationship to our own local understanding of where the buildings are and what needs to be done and what has been done? So that's taken some time to work through.
Excellent. Thank you.
So the last, thanks guys, the last part, and thank you, Jen, for coming on, coming out tonight. The last part of the super time support is just, it's just an Act 73 update. You know, that's an agenda item that I'll probably add to my report, we know as we keep going. The thing that I think you're aware of, but I would just discuss a little bit tonight, is that the redistricting task force, they have hired a facilitator. So that would be probably helpful to them relative to public meetings. They've increased their public meetings from two to four that they intend to hold. And they have asked boards, I think in partnership of VSBAs, board chairs, to give some feedback to them relative to strengths of districts, challenges of districts, other district positions that you may or may not have taken. You know, I think that's something that you'll discuss a little bit later. The Sherman Valley Superintendent Association met and one of the things we just talked about is sort of the different ways that boards are thinking about those things. And it runs the gamut, you know, as you can, as you would expect. As, you know, I think, I think there are, you know, folks that are, they just have their eye as to when the legislative session begins, you know? Because the redistricting task force is a task force, they can come up, they are charged to come up with three maps. That doesn't have to be the only source of maps that the legislature considers. And so, you know, I think as we, as we're moving and conversations are happening throughout the state, I think there are sort of others that are thinking about, whoa, what maps would we think of? And, you know, so on and so forth. And I know you've read a little bit of that in the news as we go. So, so that's the update. Other than to add that there was, there is a focus in Act 73 on school construction costs. There is a task force that's established. There is, there is everything but the discussion of the funding for school construction. And as Matt alluded to, that is becoming very dire in some of schools in other districts. And there is, was a petition that was, that was sort of put together to request from, from some of the boards in Wyndham County, that the legislature have a special session to tick up the issue of capital planning and separating it from the spending thresholds prior to any other discussion around Act 73, stating that it's aligned, it's aligned with what it is that we're supposed to be doing to consider law. So the governor at this point and, and some of the senate leadership have indicated that's not something that they're planning to do, you know? But it is a topic that's being discussed in boards, you know, throughout the state as to, as to whether or not there is general support for that throughout the state. Those are the things that I would have to update you on right now.
Okay, well, thank you so much. So next up is the report of our student representative.
Awesome. Okay, so this week at the school is our homecoming week, so that's very exciting. And so homecoming kind of works with that. We have spirit days all throughout the week and we try to just like recognize and build school spirit around different sports games and like different clubs. Last week, we had a club there. And so at least in the clubs that I'm in, definitely there have been a lot of new signups from like freshmen. It's a really great opportunity for kids to like get more integrated into the school and kind of like realize what's going on. So yeah, another thing that we do to build community is our spirit weeks, which is where everyone dresses up. I won't go through all the days, but today we did a denim on denim theme, which was to honor our classmate Reese, who we know passed away over the summer. And he wore the denim tuxedo. He wronged it. So that was today and that was really cool for everyone to wear. Then on Wednesday this week, another sort of like team building community event that's going on is our bread loaf day, where all of the ninth graders and then all of their peer leaders are going up to the bread loaf campus where it's kind of like you do, it's like a field day. So there's a lot of like little like team building activities. They hear from a motivational speaker. I don't know who it is this year, but sometimes it's like a comedy person, sometimes it's, it's a little bit of everything. And yeah, they just kind of, it's a good way to appreciate the freshmen and say like, hey, you've made it like a month into school already, like great job. And then on Friday is our homecoming pep rally. So all of the sports teams also dress up in different like costumes and there's like a costume contest and there's a bunch of different like fun activities, like musical chairs and like different stuff like that. And then we also have our football game. So it's sort of to prepare for like our homecoming football game, but I think there has been a lot of work to like bring awareness to other sports teams. So it's kind of like to let people know about the different homecoming games that are going on. And I think that our school community administration, as well as, as well as, our school community as well as the student council has done a really good job of building that community that makes things like pep rallies fun for everyone and like high spirits. So yeah, and then Saturday, we end up in coming, we have a dance. So that's going to be fun. And that's what's going on this week. Does anyone have any questions or maybe about other stuff that I've talked about before?
If I had.
Now, how's it going with the phones?
I think that it's going pretty good. I mean, like, so this morning I came to school and I had my phone in my pocket because I forgot to leave it in my car as a dude. So I went into the front office and I just like handed it to them and they kept it in a box for me. And I went in at the end of the day to go get it from their box. And I asked Emily and I was like, oh, is this the box of kids who, you know, you have to confiscate the phones from them throughout the school day? And she was like, no, that like doesn't really happen anymore. These are just kids who bring them in on their own will because it's a similar situation as you. So if that's any sort of telling to how it's going, I feel like that shows that I think people are definitely like understanding like the system and I think it's going good. I think we've all like adjusted. I don't even really think about it anymore, clearly. But yeah, I think it's going good. I think there've been a lot less distractions in classes. People are getting their work done. Yeah.
Any other questions?
I guess I have a quick question just about the phone call. Do you know, does that apply to the career centers well?
It does apply to the career center. It even applies to kids coming in like for clubs and stuff in the morning. So if you come in for zero hour, you can't have your phone either. So it's kind of.
Okay, well, thank you so much, Nava. Oh, Steve, I'm sorry, I didn't see you.
You kind of dovetail with the career center. As a person who's in contact with the student body, what's the perception of the career center? Like the availability of the programs over there and the accessibility? Like how easy is it to put it in your schedule and take classes over there?
So I'm not bristling the career center, but I do know about it. I know that there's kind of like a split that happens, I would say, from sophomore year to your junior year. So in your sophomore year, they run this thing at the career center where you get to choose different career center pathways that you'd be interested in. And it's sort of like a ninth grade orientation type of situation at the career center where you get to like get a better look at like what they do at their career center. And I mean, there's a lot of really good opportunities there. There's medical professions, which can help people like go to nursing school straight after, out of high school. There's the educational program, which can help people get like internships and stuff. There's culinary. A really great one is, it's not agriculture, it's the car one. I don't know if that's.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I mean, people who are interested in that type of pathway, like not going to college. I will say it's definitely the type of thing where it's that or I be. So I knew a kid who, super great grades, super good throughout the high school, you know, in classes and stuff, and totally could have excelled in the DP program, but chose to do medical professions instead. And so I think it's just like, there is some difficulty with that and it's definitely a little bit separated within the student body. a little bit separated within the student body. Like, like it's hard to like hang out with your friends and stuff from those classes if they're in the career center and you're not in the career center. So yeah, I guess that would be my answer. Like, it's a little hard to integrate both of them, but they're both really great options.
Now, Nava, when you say IB, do you mean the diploma program?
I do mean the full diploma program. People will still take like a class or two, but it takes up a large chunk of your time.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you so much. Next up, we're under reporter the chair. We're gonna talk a little bit about the work plan and an update. So that is included in the board materials, and it's a draft, it's a working document. And I'm not gonna go through line by line that's in there, because you have it at your, your, you know, have it available. But it does identify, for example, when the CIP, the capital improvement plans are gonna be presented. It also talks about major topics that administration is going to be providing us and when. And an important point is, there's a couple of dates that have asterisks by them, and those are special, potential special board meetings that we may have to have. So I want to point those out to you as well. And it takes us really through end of the school year, June, but there's items that will be added as we go. But this is kind of like a living document. But I think for the next several months, especially as we go into budget season, it does really identify what's gonna be happening when. Okay, so any questions on this? Jason.
When are we gonna decide on the November 17th special meeting?
Yeah, that's, I was looking at that as well. I think, and this was just left over from before, we did have a discussion. I think Suzanne, you had checked with VSBA about the timing of the.
And they still say.
That's, that's the annual meeting.
That's the annual meeting.
He's talking about November. Oh, November. I'm so sorry, I'm so sorry.
That was, I thought we were waiting based on what the facilities committee.
Yeah. Do you guys remember our discussion around the 17th? Is that one set pretty much?
I mean, in order to fit, I mean, basically, obviously, we've just kind of projected and kind of mapped out topics for future board meetings here, and we do need to fit in all of the capital improvement planning presentations for all the schools. And given, you know, some of the topics that we have coming up as we get closer to November, December, and the budget presentations become much more significant, lengthy and weighty, you know, we're reluctant to also add in a lot of school presentations that particularly, if any of them are complex, like some of them will be. So we had contemplated adding this special meeting to only focus on capital improvement planning presentations for a couple of schools.
Right.
So that we didn't have to have really long, regular board meetings to fit those presentations in. And I will say, I mean, the middle school is going to be a complex presentation, because there's a lot of just complex discussions around how, you know, how similarly the presentation will be, you know, organized based on programmatic needs. And there's a lot more that needs to happen in that building to achieve those visions. And so, it's a much more complicated presentation with complicated options. So we want to make sure that we have a good, you know, band of space to, and time to discuss that. So I would say, I think, in my opinion, it should be, we're having a special meeting, guys. And proposed for the 17th pending everyone's availability, that would be how I would look at it. But I don't know. If you guys have other thoughts.
Can you, can somebody remind me what the goal of the capital improvement plan is? Like, at the end of this, are we voting to move forward on a bond initiative? Are we, is this to deliver the final CIP to the agency of education? Is it both? Because that, that would help me understand kind of the sprint clip that we're looking at with the school presentations. I think it's both.
Yeah, it could be both. So you, you, you do need to approve a plan, you know, that will send to the AOE for sure. You, in order to, if there is something that feels pressing enough to the boards that you, you want to advance the conversation for March, then obviously you have to understand what's happening in all the schools in time to be able to have those conversations and to do that. So this timeline protects that opportunity for you, if it's something that feels important depending upon, you know, the information that you digest.
And this would all happen, obviously, well in advance of knowing anything about what the state is going to determine as far as what districts will look like.
That's correct. In fact, your plan, in the way that Act 73 is organized currently, would have, the first three years of that plan would be, would be, well, the first two years of the plan, really, would be in this district configuration, and the last three years would be in a different district configuration potentially. So, so we're working with all of those contingencies and thinking about that, you know, as it's moving ahead.
One of the reasons I ask is because I was looking through some of the facilities committee minutes, and I saw mention of things like the potential of MUHS becoming a regional high school with a thousand more students, or the potential of other current high schools in the county becoming regional middle schools. So it feels like just to, to keep front and center that everything that we're talking about, we also need to be doing some prediction, or there will be some significantly limiting information, or a lack of information that we would need to predict. Things like Mums, MUHS are kind of obvious, to say nothing about any of the other elementary schools that we're contemplating. I assume every school's gonna have a lot of work that needs to get done, so we need to make choices, but being able to know which choices to make. Okay, who was first?
I think Suzanne.
Okay, Suzanne.
But I also think that the capital improvement plan has a deadline when the plan has to be written by. So regardless of what happens after, what's our going forward, we have to have a plan written and delivered, and then what we decide to do with it after that is kind of like the next step.
Steve?
I can't speak with very much authority on where that capital improvement plan will ultimately end up and what it will be used for. Still feeling like I'm learning my role on the facilities committee a bit, but those, what you just talked about, you know, and that need to look forward, and the larger state conversations that are going on, I definitely feel attention with that, but then also hearing from some of the educators and the operations folks right now about the challenges that exist, and trying to balance both of those at the same time. And it's not very easy, so what I would say is I'm aware of that tension. I don't know that I have figured out exactly what is the path to navigate that. But it also does not mean that not doing anything is the right course either.
Yeah, and just to clarify, I would never say let's not do anything. I just think, especially as we're talking about this in a public setting, and we see beautiful floor plans for New Mary Hogan, and we're gonna see versions of that across a lot of different schools, keeping front and center all of the layers of information that everyone's got to be juggling in order to make these decisions is something that would probably behoove us to continue to engage with.
One of the things, if I could share, that feels very helpful to me is, you know, already adjusting some of the things that you're pointing out, because we're in this process right now, we're able to get some actual opinions from professionals that we've already used to counteract perhaps misunderstandings or misinformation about, you know, how buildings that we have might, may or may not fit into anybody's regional thinking. And, and I think, you know, the more everybody can, can look into sort of factual information as we're thinking about this, the better. And, and, you know, for that reason, you know, the architects have been able to work with us, as we've said, okay, if, if, if we, if we are here in our enrollment, and we go to here in our enrollment versus here in our enrollment, what happens? You know, what does that look like? What is that scope? Which, which is just a sheer coincidence of us being able to do that right now, but it has already proved helpful, and, and just ensuring that we don't have misinformation out there, you know, that, that I don't think is, is useful in a, in a process as high stakes is the one that they're thinking about right now.
Mary Heather.
Yeah, and I'll just add, I mean, I, I share Steve's like the tension between, you know, what is necessary now versus what is contemplated for the future with a decision-making body that we don't even know exists. And so I think, obviously, the starting point is really looking at, you know, what do we have on the ground now? How is the building being used? How are educators able to deliver the curriculum that we want them to deliver and provide the services that, you know, students need? And where are those, you know, where are they rubbing up against problems doing that currently? And so really, the focus is that. And then there's also this like, well, what if, you know, to sort of add on to that really foundational conversation. So, I mean, I, I think we're all kind of in this tentative, like, we don't know what's gonna happen, but, but it's also, I think, important for us to gather facts so that decision-making is fact-based in the future. And, you know, if, if we do, you know, in six months' time, in years' time, sense that, you know, we are gonna be a receiving district, you know, I think that's, that's important to have the conversations now about what that might look like for our kids, so. Yeah. Steve?
Yeah, I think the only other thing I'll add, and I didn't want to indicate that anyone was in favor of doing nothing. I've wondered myself if that's the right approach with kind of the variation that could exist out there, you know? Is that the responsible thing? I, I don't feel it is, but I think it's reasonable to arrive at that conclusion in some ways. But I will say, as far as the facilities work, in our conversations with the contractors, and I think Mary Heather and Jason would back me in this, they have been pretty clear that they have been around this conversation long enough, and the board is going to need to make the conclusions on this stuff. And they're hopeful to present the information to us similar to as it was tonight, but it's really going to fall to the board to steer that ship. And, and I think we all should keep that in mind, that as we're going through these presentations, those are gonna be decisions that we are going to have to grapple with. They are very clear that that is our lane.
Ron?
Picking up on that, I wonder if in future presentations, there would be a way of, not exactly ranking, but of kind of identifying like, okay, $20.8 million is what we would really love to do to Mary Hogan. But since there will be a lot of buildings that will need a lot of things that this board is gonna have to decide about, it could be useful also to have kind of prioritization. I know that you've already included some level of, I guess, priority one and two versus leaving out kind of lower priority elements, but in, in kind of that final number, it might be useful to have some more gray area, and some more kind of saying, okay, these are the things that are absolutely necessary to have a functional building, and these are the things that would be amazing, and we're gonna make, we're gonna have to make some difficult decisions here in any direction. So I think the richer that detail is, the easier, the more feasible our decisions will be at the start, when we do end up having to make them.
My guess is, Ron, you'll see that on the December 22nd meeting, which, you know, hopefully we'll have a quorum for, just like November 24th. You know, those are, just in that first draft, would have that sense of prioritization. You'll see some of the projects that are, that, you know, are talked about come back around, and then, and then have them, you know, spread out with, with prioritization. It's, it's, it's hard to do that before you've heard them all, you know, and before you've gone, been able to go through them all. But in deference to the board, if we were to try to plop all of this, you know, into one board meeting all at once, you know, that, that would be pretty difficult to make sense of, you know? So, so it's, it's definitely a balancing act. But for sure, that evening, you'll see that there.
Thank you.
Jess?
Just related to the schedule, like you mentioned, Dr. Baker, recognizing that the 24th is the Monday of a whole week off of school, and we're gonna make two decisions. I don't think we need to change that, but I'm saying that out loud for myself, and would love a reminder that like, that's an especially important meeting to not be traveling for if we're gonna make decisions.
Yeah.
Or if, alternatively, if people know that they're not gonna be here, maybe we shift the schedule.
That's the November meeting?
Yeah.
Twenty, uh, twenty-fourth.
Twenty-fourth. Right. And December 22nd, they also be in that same boat, but Jess, thank you for bringing those up, because I've, I've been harping on those dates as well, saying that typically people have traveled, and so we just need to make sure that we have meetings where we have quorons.
School is in session through Wednesday of the, of the winter holiday week, and is not in session Monday through Friday of the Thanksgiving week, for your reference.
Right. And, you know, the good news is, you have this now, and so folks can, you know, plop this on their calendar and commit to it, right? Or if you don't have the ability to attend one date, and there's others that also have that ability, there's nothing that says we can't adjust maybe another day for that, you know, the week before, since they're every two weeks. So that's important to know, so we could actually change when the meeting is held, the regular board meeting is held, because these are regular board meetings. Right? So that's, thank you for highlighting that, though.
With the exception of the 17th.
Oh, the 17th, that's.
I made Barb promise that if we did the 17th, she could add absolutely nothing else to the agenda.
Right. And I agree.
Understood.
I agree. Okay? So, you know, this is a real improvement. Basically, in the past, we kind of drove the ship by, okay, what are we gonna have on the agenda for the next meeting, right? And having this, so that you know the topics that are coming up, I think is really important. And as I said before, you know, later in March and beyond, there's some lighter areas, which will be fleshed out. But then a lot of our presentations, like math instructional presentations, literacy, all that kind of thing will come in, after we've done all the heavy lift with budget and CIP.
Yeah, I appreciate the roadmap.
Yeah. And, and it is a draft. It is a living document.
Subject to adjustment.
Yes. Okay. Next, wanted to talk about the redistricting survey, and as opposed to the de-districting. So in this particular case, and Dr. Baker brought it up as well, that the Vermont School Board Association has requested boards to fill out a survey. I did get two back, and thank you for those that did send it back. But when you look at it, I was even struggling with, how is this really capturing what I want the board, what I want to be able to tell them, right? It's just some select questions, and how's it gonna be used, that kind of thing. So what other boards have done, some other boards have done, instead of filling out the survey, or in addition to filling out the survey, they've actually provided written testimony. And so with the written testimony, the benefit I see is, we can kind of drive what we want to, you know, basically say as a board, as opposed to responding to some specific questions that they've asked. So what I'd like to do is put it out to the board, what is your preference? You know, we have a couple of choices: do nothing, fill out the survey, do some sort of testimony, or also do the survey. And so I'm really interested to hear what folks think at this point. Mary Heather?
I'll just kick off the discussion. I think, I feel like the survey questions don't dig deep enough to get, you know... to get, you know, some of the concerns that we might have out on the table and in front of the redistricting task force. So I would advocate for putting together some kind of collective statement from our board. I guess the question would be, how do we do that quickly?
Right.
And so, you know, I think we could, you know, have the executive committee draft something and share it with the board, because we really want to get it out in front of them by their next.
Yeah.
So that would be my suggestion. I'm not sure doing the survey would quite get what we want said in front of them.
Ellen.
I would just throw out there, if we do that, I actually would recommend that the board members send the executive committee our thoughts and then use AI to create a summarized document. And then it's incumbent on all of us to read that draft to make sure that what we've sent feels represented and accurate. But that's a way that I've used to actually bring like lots of different opinions in writing together.
Yeah, and that's what we did the first time around when we submitted testimony. That's exactly what we did.
It was from our minutes from the board meeting, but in this case, we can't afford two board meetings, right? So I was going to mention that same thing, Ellen, so thank you for bringing that up, that if, in fact, if we chose to do the testimony and folks could individually just feed us their thoughts of what they would like to have us include, then we could create the draft, send it out, and then at the next board meeting, give it a thumbs up, thumbs down kind of thing, that it's ready to go.
Sir?
Go ahead, Laura.
Is there a preferred format for that? Like bullet points or like a written like paragraph?
Anything, anything you have time to do. Yeah, anything, whatever you can find the time to do would be helpful if we decide to do that.
I was going to say, it would be helpful to have prompts or like any, anything, even if we decided tonight, like however broad. Part of what I struggled with this survey is it's a lot of questions. And even if you took a sample of those to say, well, I guess I'll just respond to this, it feels like you're missing something. So I don't know if we could make it, I think an easier way to do this would just be to say, write a couple paragraphs based on these, I don't know. But any prompts would be helpful.
Others. What are folks thinking? Steve.
I don't mind saying, I'm one of those two people that responded to the survey.
We're all sitting on that end.
There you go. Whoever it is. I mean, it does feel like a massive issue. I don't know how long it took me to write out my responses and I felt like they only touched on small parts of it. I guess just rereading your email, Barb, it sounds like this came from the redistricting task force through VSBA. So I understand that people wish it was deeper, but I think these may be the prompts.
From their perspective.
Yeah, and that's kind of what I'm.
From their perspective, but what are the prompts from our, you know, what do we want?
What do we want them to know?
What do we really want them to know and consider? Like, it was in the Abbeille-Indy, right? One of the representatives had a op-ed today, or last Thursday, really stressing supervisor unions, you know, going to, going back to supervisor unions. And, you know, maybe this doesn't, the survey doesn't really assess our opinion on that by any means. So that could be an area that we want to talk about. You know, I personally think that would be a step backwards. And, you know, basically having a superintendent in charge of how many districts, all with different curriculum, all with different policy, you know, all that kind of thing, and no synergy, so where's the savings? You know, it just doesn't make any sense. So to me, personally. So we can identify the prompts as a board that we want to consider and write the testimony based on that. And basically, one of the questions that was kind of bothering me is, well, who would you like to be included in your district, right? To me, it has nothing to do with what's best for kids, that kind of thing. It's like, is this like best friends kind of thing? Well, you know, I'll play with this district, but not this district. That just seemed a little odd for me, and I was struggling with that. So that's your job is to really identify, you know, based on, you know, the geographical area and also the various different districts, how best to integrate them to achieve really good outcomes, right? So each board is going to be like, oh, yeah, I love my district and, you know, I want to be with this one and not this one kind of thing. It didn't make sense to me. Ellen?
Reading through the survey questions again, I think two suggestions for prompts. One could just be, what do you see as the potential opportunities for new districts? And what do you see as the potential challenges? And then we can each write bullet points, paragraphs, you know, whatever kind of represents our perspective on that and see what we come together with.
How's that sound to everyone? And then actually, when you look at what was included in Dr. Baker's update today, right? From what the leadership team and the principals provided, it was kind of in that light, right? Those are the questions they really focused on, right? So that could also be, you know, factored into.
Maybe we should just use the same.
We'll just use our list.
Well, I mean, it comes up on the operational side as well. You know, I mean, it's, everybody's trying to figure out everything, you know? One big conversation that's coming up on the operational side is, is who has debt and who doesn't? You know, and who has assets and who doesn't?
Right.
And, you know, how, who, it's being referred to as solvent. Are you solvent as a district or are you, you know, heavily indebted? And so what does that mean? I'm not sure I even know what people are referring to when they're saying that. But there's a, there's a lot of requests for information. I think, you know, one of the, one of the things that we're doing on the operational side when we're getting requests for information is we're understanding who's holding the data and where is that, what is, what is the use of that data? What is the use of the data now and what is the potential use of the data moving ahead? You know, data is something that can be construed a number of different ways, you know? And so, you know, we're really trying to understand who, what's the source of the request? What's the format of the request? Where is this data going from here? And what's important for us to understand about that as we're trying to answer the questions that were being asked?
So, first of all, what's the sense? Are folks generally thinking that providing written testimony in our own structure basically is the choice? Or would folks prefer just to continue with the survey? I think we have to establish that first. And I haven't heard from everybody, so what's people thinking?
Can we take like a straw poll?
Sure, absolutely. So how, raise your hand if you think we should just continue with the survey and then I'll bug everybody to fill it out, including myself. So including those that are on Zoom. So how many think we should continue just fill out the survey and be done with it? Raise your hand. Okay, thank you, Steve. I can't see Jamie or Trish.
No from me.
Okay. And, okay. Okay, so. Exactly. Okay, so then, I'm not going to make assumptions. Do folks, because one option could be to do nothing. Do folks believe we should attempt to, you know, come up with some testimony using, you know, the questions that Ellen suggested? How many feel that that would be a good approach?
Could she restate those questions?
What are the opportunities and what are the challenges?
Was it just looking future or based on current?
Oh, like, right, because some of the survey questions are like, what are the strengths of your? I was thinking future to inform how the task force is making its decisions. So in contemplating larger districts or how districts are put together, what are opportunities? Maybe that's two.
Yeah, I guess I would be more in favor of a question that builds on our current experience.
Okay, we could do that.
As opposed to just, I think it's good to face forward and lean into it, but I think it's also important to recognize the work we're doing right now and acknowledge that and build into it somehow.
And we have a lot of actually good starting data with that. When you read through, have a chance to read through, you know, what was included in our weekly update from Dr. Baker as well. Mary Heather.
Yeah, I can, if it helps. I'm looking at that right now. I can just read off those questions and see if any or all of those seem palatable.
Sure.
So one is, how does the current structure of your district support improved student outcomes for all students pre-K through 12? What are the strengths of your current district system? What are the challenges or weaknesses of your current district or system? What opportunities do you see as a member of a bigger district? What resources, support, or policy changes would you need to seize those opportunities? What risks or concerns do you see as a member of a bigger district? And finally, are there other districts that you would believe would be good partners? This is the one Barb was referring to, like, right? Who do you want to get married to? So those are the questions that came, that were provided with responses in our weekly spotlight from both our district leaders and our principals. So we could pick some of them or do all of them if that's a good starting point and use AI to kind of synthesize our collective responses would be a good place to start.
How's that sound? Okay?
Just to clarify, so that means we're taking the questions in the survey and crafting our own answers collectively as a board to just answer and then sending them to the redistricting.
Well, and then the mechanism could be just a testimony document as opposed to a survey document. Right. And then if we choose not to respond to some of them, it doesn't look like, oh, you know, they have no opinion on that or whatever.
Right. So the expectation would be every, every board member provide an answer to those questions, those prompts, and then the executive committee would collect it, use a tool, an AI tool to synthesize that and come up with a collective board sort of response to those points to make sure that the task force knows how we feel about those things.
Right, and then we could share that beyond the task force.
Suzanne, I had her hand up briefly. Several times. If we do that, I think the board needs to know when their responses need to be delivered by when they would be able to see a generated compilation of comments and when they would have a final opportunity to say yea or nay to it before it gets sent off. Those are important pieces in people's busy lives to be able to have that information.
So the next board meeting is the 13th. So it would, prior to that meeting, we would need to, as the executive committee, come up with a draft, a good draft, right, before that. So you have a chance to review it, and then there could be some tweaks thereafter, but not major changes probably. And that's similar to what we did when we gave testimony back in the spring.
Was it the spring?
Yeah. So.
It seems like plenty of time.
I think so. So what that means, I think, is a deadline would need to be, this is the 22nd. If we had input by, say, the Sunday, because we have an executive committee meeting on. Well, actually, we don't, but we do have the virtual IB and NISAC.
Yeah.
And so, so I have to warn, yeah, yeah, I have to warn that. So I could add that on to it as a Zoom.
But the 29th is also the same report meeting that some of us, me particularly, have been invited to. So that would be.
Okay, so we'll figure that out. We can chat about when we could get together, but it would have to be next week, I would think. And then, so if folks could really get their input to us by Sunday or, you know, giving a little more time, that would be good.
The 28th.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then, yeah, we'll figure out how we can do it. Maybe we can get together for ahead of time, right? Because I agree, through that meeting, so, okay.
The letter to the board chair is asking for the survey results, asks for information back by October 6.
Right.
Is that so they can compile data and put it together?
Probably.
Okay. So we're not beholden to that date particularly for doing testimony?
Well, we can't. Even if we decide to do the survey, you know, it's going to be hard to compile all the results without having a special board meeting, you know, for folks to review it, right? And so that short deadline is kind of tough. I mean, some boards, just the board chair went ahead and filled them out. There's no way I was going to do that.
There are other boards that are holding community meetings on the subject specifically. So across the state, there's a variety of ways. I'm guessing not all of them will come to conclusion by October 6.
Right. I guess, you know, what's, what do we need to do to have a good product that we feel good about? Okay? Are we good?
Are you refreshing questions for people to answer or are you sending something out?
I will.
Yeah, that would be great.
I'll basically just grab it from the questions that you included.
Yeah, thank you so much. Yeah. Okay, are we good?
I think so.
Okay. Thank you. The next item is a potential action on VSBA and VHI business meeting votes. So basically, for both the annual meeting for VSBA and the annual meeting for VHI, districts can nominate or can authorize a board member to vote in those proceedings, right? The VHI, the materials are not yet available, but will be. And that meeting takes place on October 30 at the.
Doubletree.
At the Doubletree in conjunction to the conference, right? The VSBA, their meeting is, I believe, the 23rd.
23rd.
Yep, and it is online and I did send out information on it this afternoon. So question one, in last year, we didn't nominate or didn't approve anyone to represent the district. So question number one is, do we want to, right? You're not forced to. And number two, if we do want to, then for VSBA with the resolutions, it would be important to know, you know, to say, yep, we're going to have somebody represent the district. But it's important then to know what each individual board member is thinking about the resolutions, which we could put together a survey, so you could quickly go in, say, vote no on this, vote yes, whatever. And then at the next board meeting, we could share that and go through it and just to minimize the amount of time that we spend on it in a meeting. So focused with the VSBA first, you know, there's a whole bunch of resolutions. There's materials that they provide on how to analyze the resolutions. There was a training on it. Do we want to provide input in this process?
Sorry, there's 13 resolutions plus ongoing resolutions of the VSBA board. the resolutions committee looks at every year. They determine if they're going to continue the resolution or not. So I sit on that resolution committee, and I do know that they really want boards to have an understanding of what the resolutions are before they opt to vote. And at the annual meeting, the way they run it is if you are the, if you are a voting person for your district, you're allowed kind of into the center of the meeting. Everybody else sits on the outside in a Zoom meeting, and there's no input really from anybody else that's there, and there's no questions either. It's only those who vote that ask questions and whatnot.
Thoughts? Yes, Mary Heather?
I mean, I would feel comfortable just making a motion to designate our board chair or our board vice chair to go. It's just one vote per district, correct? So I'll make a motion that we designate, because you're planning to go, according to Barb. I'll just make a motion to authorize our board chair to vote on the ACSD board's behalf for the VSBA annual meeting or for resolutions presented at the VSBA annual meeting.
One second.
Okay, and discussion?
Is that, are we going to do the survey? And then you'll vote according to the survey?
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, that's what, and no matter who you decide you wanted to do it, I think it's critical that we do this survey, and then we can see where the majority of board members fall. We still have a meeting that we can quickly take a look at this and so folks know this would be the position that would be voted on. Any other comments? Okay, so all those in favor of the board chair being the representative, authorized representative to vote in that meeting, the VSBA annual meeting, which is an online meeting, which is on the 23rd of October, indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions?
I will, because I'm a VSBA rep.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so we could do a similar process with the VIHI, and as soon as the card, we're supposed to get materials as board members that they'll be voting on, we could do the same approach there as well as far as making sure we have board member input and make the decision based on that whoever is representing the district.
Okay, well, I'll make a motion. I will make a motion to authorize the board chair to vote on resolutions for VIHI on the board's behalf.
It's not a resolution, it's not a motion.
It's a motion, so.
It's a straight motion.
Yeah.
It's not in their budget.
One second.
Okay, a second from Ron. Discussion. Okay, all those in favor of the board chair being the representative for the district to vote on the VIHI motion? Please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, and thank you. And again, in both these cases, I will make sure I'm soliciting input from you all. The VIHI, we have time, that's not until the 30th, right? But the other one, the good news is we have the information. So I will create a little Google form and send that out to you in the next day or two so that you can give me your position, okay? With a deadline for responding. Okay, thank you. Next, the only thing under other, and Dr. Baker also touched upon this as well. As you all recall, I got a letter from another board chair about decoupling capital spending from per pupil spending. Wanted a special session. And I responded by basically saying I'd bring it up here if we wanted to do something similar. I also sent, under just personal, me as an individual, forwarded this email to all the representatives in our area just to get their, make sure they were aware of what was going on, about this request and petitions that are going on, and any insights that they might have as well. And as I get insights in, you know, what I'll do is accumulate those. You know, to be truthful, I sent this out yesterday. It took me a while to get to it, this email. So, and that, you know, may be all that we do, right? Unless someone thinks we should do more than that.
He's been all over Vermont there and everything, so.
Yeah. I mean, this could be another thing in the future that we could, you know, write to legislators or something like that to. I don't think a special, as Wendy pointed out, there's not going to be a special session that covers this. It would have to be someone coming up with legislation that they start, they work on next year. Right, so I'm not convinced that a letter now is going to change anything, but it may be something in the future because we could have, you know, it doesn't impact us now really, because we don't have that, but it could in the future, right? So it's something to think about. We don't have to make a decision about. But I just wanted to give you an update, what I did, and if I receive, you know, anything meaningful back, right? I will definitely forward that on to you. Okay, so that's it for me. So now we need to go to board committee report, and we'll start with communications and engagement.
Tricia couldn't be here until she asked Jess and I to present. As far as I can see, the real thing to update on our, for our first traveling town hall that Suzanne referenced earlier is going to be in Bridgeport one week from today, on Monday, the 29th, 6:00 PM. We've talked in here about those a little bit. We're really trying to elicit from the community kind of something about their hopes and dreams, especially around facilities, logistics. And, yeah, just kind of have a more informal conversation. It will be kind of a warned meeting, so it will be officially on the record, but it will be recorded on video, and so we hope that it will kind of be conducive to good conversation with the community. And every, you know, all ACSD residents are welcome to come, but kind of the focus of that meeting in Bridgeport will be about Bridgeport. The next one is planned for Cornwall, I think it's the 20th of October. And we're coordinating with principals and mostly friends of the schools as we do that. The other thing is that we're, yeah, working through what's the best strategy for a newsletter for the full, because there's a lot of meetings coming down the pipe, and we don't want to, a lot of decisions, and we don't want to be kind of too redundant with the kind of communication that the district is sending out as well.
The only thing I'll add is that in our meeting this morning about town halls, we talked a lot about just making sure that we have a lot of avenues for folks to engage with these town halls, even if they can't be there in person. So we worked with Emily to, she's going to be putting together like a form that's attached to a QR code, and that'll go on posters and things like that. So if folks can't be there, even if they can be there and would rather put it in writing, they have that. We're also going to have like a little box that people can write things into. There'll be easel paper. So just really trying to think about like, you know, the accessibility of being able to kind of be engaged with us in this way and also, yeah, making sure there's lots of avenues, so.
Will there be Zoom links?
There won't be Zoom links because it's not going to be a virtual option, so it's only an in-person meeting.
Oh, that's too bad.
Yeah.
There will be light refreshments.
How light?
Dinner!
I have a quick question, sorry. Do you, you mentioned like hopes and dreams around facilities? Is that kind of the, like, are you structuring this around that? And is there, I guess I would hope there would be some coordination with the facilities committee on that?
Yeah, we decided to really keep our kind of driving questions around, like, what you value and what you hope for your school community, but with the idea that we're going to have some examples, like your school building, staffing, different types of programming, just to give people some, we grappled a lot with like, do we give really specific prompts or do we keep it super open? And kind of landed in the more open side, but giving people examples to dig into so it doesn't kind of feel just like a floundering conversation. Also knowing that people, we're asking people to like come and spend time with us, so we want to kind of honor giving it a little bit of structure. And we've also talked a lot about it really being a learning opportunity, so we're going to do seven of these. And, yeah, it's going to be a living document, if you will. So whatever we learn from this one, we can do better and different for the next one. Yeah, so if you are able to attend, we would love your feedback.
Yeah, so the one thing we have to be concerned about is a, warned as a C and E committee. So we, as a board member, I guess you could sit there and not participate, but we have to be careful that it doesn't become a full board meeting. So that we don't have a quorum of the board there, and everyone's, you know, participating as well. So it's a little touchy there. So we don't break open meeting law. Otherwise, it needs to be warned as.
For this one, there will already be five of us, because the committee's four, and Suzanne, we're formally inviting the person who lives in a different community that we're going to, and Suzanne's able to attend. So two more of you.
So two more would be in a full board meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, right. So.
Two more participating members is what I should clarify that.
Yep. So that's just something to keep in mind as you're thinking about that meeting. You know, maybe check in with C and E, Tricia, or one of the committee members. And if you do, are thinking of going, and they can then say, oh, you know, maybe not, and what role you want to play. So we can make sure we don't have a quorum of the whole board, right?
Participating, we could just go and sit in the audience and listen.
You could just like, yeah, and not really be there as your capacity on the board.
We just want to make sure if you go and observe, as was pointed out to some of us when we went to Shoreham, was that you don't sit next to each other. You know, find other friends and don't sit next to your board members.
Right.
Because if you're sitting next to the board member, somebody could presume, whether right or not, that you're having board conversations about what's being said. So if you sit next to someone else, then they can presume that of you.
Okay? Next up is finance committee.
You saw much of the work of the finance committee tonight in the budget drivers' presentation. Another thing I'll just plant as a seed is that at our next meeting, you'll be asked to think about feasibility targets for the administration to hit within the budget. So think about what might be a reasonable, appropriate target.
And what do you mean by a target for folks, so they know what that is?
Well, one example could be, say, we want to spend the exact same amount of money as we spent last year, so zero increase in the total spend. Another target could be, we want to set programming to be exactly the same. We want to keep a level funding for programming, regardless of what that incurs in terms of cost increase. We could say, you know, do your best and keep it under 2%. Do your best, keep it under 5%. Do your best, keep it under 12%. That's what.
Last year, we set a target, and I can't even remember the target, what's it? Do you remember? It was 2%, yeah. Right, and so, and so that Matt's presentation kind of sets us up for that because he was telling us how much room there was and how close we were to the threshold, right, excessive spending threshold.
And even in that, there's lots of different 2%. So there's 2% to total expense, 2% to ed funds, ed spending, 2% to, no. So, yeah.
Yeah, I think it just helps us to know what's on your mind at this stage. In no circumstance would we ever bring you a budget that we don't feel is responsible. So if you said, you can spend 8% more than you're spending right now, if we don't feel that that's needed, you know, then we're going to have that conversation with you as we're building that. So, so don't, you know, don't, it's really for us to understand where you are so that when we're building, we have some of that in mind. Okay, thank you. Next up is facilities committee.
Again, you saw a lot of facilities work tonight, so unless there are questions or concerns, I'll see my time.
Yeah, thank you. Helen, did you have a?
No, I didn't.
Okay, okay. Next up is the policy committee, and, which includes a board action to adopt the warm policies. And the list was modified at the beginning because you can receive a copy of every single policy. Just C5, C7, C11, C28, C29, D24, and F5. Okay, so Jamie, I'm going to hand it over to you.
Great, hi, everyone. I may pass the buck to someone in the room. I alerted them earlier to this just because it's easier for them to communicate. Well, so I have a technical question, but I guess I just want to, we should see if there's any other questions about the action we're taking tonight that would, that would get in the way of that, or that would impact that action. Like, do people have stuff to raise at this point? Or do people feel comfortable with taking action on the policies that Barb elaborated?
Go ahead, Jess.
Last week, I know I talked about F5, the Behavioral Threat Assessment Teams. And as I was kind of getting ready to dig into that, I had this moment of being like, there's a policy committee for a reason, and that's like a workspace. So over the weekend, I reached out to Barb and Jamie about being like, if, you know, if I was interested in seeing if the policy committee was interested in digging more into that, would the policy committee be the appropriate place to do that, all of that? And it seemed like that was the vibe, which is why I didn't bring anything to this meeting. But my hope is that it's a policy we, that the committee and in turn the board can dig into more very soon, knowing that it's supposed to be passed some point in October. So, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, can I respond to that?
Yes, please.
I, I don't know if you got my email, Jess, I wrote back earlier. And just saying that, thank you for raising those questions and feeling like it makes sense for the policy committee to put the policy on its agenda soon. And then I was agnostic about whether or not we should personally, about whether or not we should adopt the policy tonight as is planned and then discuss it, or do the discussion first before we move ahead with the adopt. That I see. Either way, I see room and reason to discuss it more, given your questions. But I wanted to leave up the larger question to the full board, which I assume has a, which has a vote, so.
Laura?
There's absolutely nothing stopping us from passing a policy tonight and then revising it again in two weeks and repassing a revised policy. I'm of the opinion that we should pass this as is so that we have one on the books to be in compliance. And then we can reevaluate it at our next, or next to next, policy meeting. And then bring it back to the board.
Also, I mean, what we're required to do by the AOE after the passage of this policy is establish procedures. Those procedures are supposed to take you to account, AOE model procedures. So that's what the administration will be doing next. And, and I, and I think, you know, that's something that, that, you know, certainly can advance the conversations that are, that are important to people as we're really thinking about what is it that we do on the ground.
Suzanne? Just going to move the, all of the policies that we can move tonight to get the motion on the table. And we can work on procedures and such for policies at another time.
You did have a question.
Can we make the motion and then do the question?
Sure.
Okay.
I'd like to move that we adopt the following policies. C5 firearms, C7 student attendance, C11 student freedom of expression in school, C28 transgender and gender, C29 district equity policy, D24 special education, and F5 behavioral threat assessment team.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you, Laura. Okay, discussion.
Yeah, I'm just curious to hear from you, Wendy, as far as not having this policy in place and kind of figuring out what's the chicken, what's the egg here, what order do we go in? What happens now in these situations? And what would be different once this policy passes as far as the administration? Would that operationally change anything?
No, no, it wouldn't. I mean, we, we are in substantial compliance with the policy already, as you would expect, you know, because it's, it comes from law. So, you know, we're already in substantial compliance. Passing the policy tonight doesn't change that. As where we do have work to do, and which can be a report, you know, certainly that we're bringing back, is establishing the finer points of our procedures. And, and that is something that our safety team will be taking up, you know, as we begin our season meeting together.
So passing this wouldn't be a departure from kind of standard ops right now?
And by passing this, as Laura pointed out, would be in compliance, right? And if in fact, our base slate attend, you know, baseline intentions are great, but we have a lot going on in the Policy Committee right now. So, you know, what if that work had to be pushed out to November, for example, that kind of thing? So then we'd be at risk for being in noncompliance, which I'd prefer us not to be. So, any other discussion?
And just to, to say it out loud, to make sure I'm hearing you right, Jess, we're not obviously contemplating how procedure on this policy gets written. What we're going to pick up again, maybe in November after the Policy Committee gets through some immediate C30 stuff, is what we adopt tonight and revising it so that pieces of what might go into procedure are enshrined in policy also, to make sure that we're not relying on procedural changes by administration to uphold people's basic rights.
Exactly.
So, so to just say, like, it's important.
Strengthening the policy.
And it's worth revisiting in policy, not just procedure, but for the purposes of making sure we're compliant and kicking the can a little bit down the road to get there to November, it can go on the Policy Committee agenda pretty quick.
Suzanne?
And along with those lines, it also allows you more time for any changes that you make to a policy to have it run through legal.
Yeah.
Because these all come to us being run through legal lawyers, and so that they can stand. But if you make any changes, it's always a recommendation that your own lawyers verify those changes.
Any other questions, or are we ready for the questions? Okay, so the motion on the floor is, all those in favor of approving the following policies indicate by saying aye. C5, C7, C11, C28, C29, D24, and F5. All the in favors indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, that group has passed. Thank you, Policy Committee. And the other ones that I missed, didn't realize that it wasn't included in the attachment, I'll put on the next, we'll put on the next board meeting so that we can get those approved as well. Go ahead, Jamie.
Thank you so much. I just have a technical question while there are some other experts in the room. When we put the final policies on our website, the warned, the new warned date should be when it was first put on our board agenda, which was our last meeting.
Actually.
Is that correct?
You put the adopted date on the policy. You put the adopted date on, but the worn date would be September 12th because that's.
Right.
When everything went out on these.
Okay.
Yeah, I would just use September 12th because everything was worn at that point, even though it wasn't complete, you know, some things were missing.
It's meant to, it's meant to indicate for the record, Jamie, that, that the correct amount of time has lapsed between the time that it was initially warmed and the time it was adopted.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Next is Negotiations.
Negotiations committee met today. Most of those meetings are in executive session, so there's not really what much we can say in public. But we are waiting patiently and are going to move forward when we can move forward. But we are in a good place. We have thoroughly reviewed the contract and have had a strategy session. So we feel good about where we are.
Okay, well, thanks for all the prep work. That's appreciated. Student Outcomes Committee, Ellen?
There are no updates. We are meeting on Wednesday morning and, yeah, morning.
Thank you so much. Hannaford Career Center, Laura and Steve, anything to report out on?
I'll let you go.
It's okay to say no.
No, there's plenty happening. We had a presentation last week about where, where we are enrollment wise. And there's still a lot of room for more people to attend the Career Center. And as, you know, we're talking about tuition earlier tonight. As more students attend, the Career Center tuition rates per student comes down. So it's really kind of in our best interest to do everything that we can to help promote that, right? Part of that, some catchment area issues, we could, we could be pulling from a larger geographic issue, or area that is not something we can control as a board. Would love to see, there's, I guess, some scheduling concerns between the high school and the Career Center. Would love to see some synergy there in trying to iron maybe some of those things out. We're waiting for some numbers on what exactly that looks like, interest versus what actually ends up fitting in student schedules. So probably have a little more information on that next time. Anything I missed, Steve?
No, I mean, that was, those are the big icebergs.
There's been, there's some open houses coming up. Some major improvements that have happened over the summer in terms of equipment and two new buses coming and a whole bunch of stuff, so. Yeah, things are going well there, but still room for more students.
We have, we have several programs that are at capacity. Diesel and automotive and welding. I'd like to see what's going to happen with Otter Valley because Otter Valley just opened up a welding program. And Otter Valley is one of these schools we can draw on, so we'll see what happens there. But those are good. Overall, you said there were spaces, that kind of undersells. We had about 400 slots that we could, the capacity that we could fill in, across the various programs, so.
We could take almost, almost the same population.
Same population that we're having there now, so.
Go ahead, Mary Heather.
Well, I'm just wondering, I guess my follow-up question was, which are the programs that are not filling? And, I mean, you've got some programs that are at capacity. Was the thought to increase the capacity of those programs, or?
So, so when I, when we say 400 slots, that's without any additional cost. So the staffing, the equipment, the facilities are there for those to, to handle up to 400 students across various programs. The problem with expanding programs that are at capacity is it's, it's a significant cost differential. So, for example, diesel, that would require opening another diesel bay, having another lift, another, you know, so the costs are pretty exorbitant to expand some of those programs. Even, even welding, you know, you would think, but there's a significant investment in expanding it beyond that. Some of the programs that have had, you know, a little bit of roller coastering here, when you, the problem is, you can't really cut back. And you're already, the sunk costs are sunk on some of those facilities. So for example, if construction dips down to five students and they can have 24, you can't sell off the bandsaws and, you know, so you've still got those overhead costs. So trying very hard to keep a lid on costs and to expand a program would be expensive. And so we really don't have the leeway to do that because.
Yeah, I guess my question is more about like, the programs being offered, are they the programs that are needed and that are being in demand?
Yeah, so that's a very, there's a very complicated process that the AOE requires you to go through to either add or subtract a program. And so we also have this, the, was it sixth semester moving average is how our attendance is determined, not by what was there in October 15th. And right now, this is, I think, the last year that we are, we're finally going to drop off the COVID years, which was, which was pretty bad. So that was holding us back. And so we're going to get, there's going to be a big bump on that. And so we're, we're trying to maintain programs. And for example, if a program is undersubscribed, but is extremely popular in the community, if you would try, it would be like saying, well, you know, we don't have enough football players at Middlebury, let's cut football. You would have a human cry from the community because there are some programs that are a little low, but they are extremely well thought of in the community. So we really don't want to cut them unless we have to, so.
And it's normal to see somewhat of a fluctuation throughout years. But there's advisory committees as well that help steer the course of these classes as well.
And some things, like, like the advanced engineering program, that doesn't sound as sexy to high school students as car repairs or, you know, nursing or anything like that. But it turns out it's one of the more lucrative, and when kids get in there and they see what gets done, it's like, oh my God, this is really cool. I mean, you know, they're, they're doing robots and, you know, and robotic manufacturing. And the kids get in there and they like it. And that's why it's important for them to get that, that exposure to the Career Center, like the exploratory that they get in their freshman and sophomore year, so.
There's a pre-technical class for that.
Pre-technical class, yeah.
And once the kids can get in and like see that class, the retention rate into the program from that pre-tech class is like 100%.
Yeah, yeah.
But because it doesn't sound like what 14-year-old knows exactly what that means career-wise, right? Not a lot of them. So to have that be accessible to them is a real draw for the, for that program. And it's one of the ones that's like in the most demand in the community.
In the community, right.
For graduates.
It's kind of interesting in that, you know, you have, you have four high schools that, that draw, right? So, I mean, and, and, you know, three of them have busing, right? It's kind of scenarios that come about. And the fourth, you know, if you think about our high school like you. So we're, we're not big enough to offer five sections of AP Calc. Or we don't do AP Calc, but you know what I'm saying? Like, it's, it's, if a student needs something because they're interested in going into engineering and they've got to have a math component in addition to this, to the other things they love, we're not big enough to offer all of that. So, so some of the scheduling constraints relate to students wanting to, you know, pursue wonderful pathways and having to choose a way to do that. And, you know, that's, that's, that's in part being mid-sized, you know, the way that we are. That's a, that's a, a little bit of a constraint of our size. We can offer a lot, just not a lot of a lot.
Right, right.
If that makes any sense.
Yeah, and what you were saying, some of those undersubscribed programs, they are turning, they have kids that they're having to turn away at Stafford in Rutland that have parallel programs. And we would love to have them come up here. And there are some structural impediments to making that happen. But if that could happen and there's work trying to make that happen, that would increase. I mean, that'd be great for everybody because those kids would get to go to those programs and it would significantly cut the tuition costs for Hannaford because you are spreading that tuition out over a lot more students, so.
And gross cross.
It's where the creativity lies because, you know, if, if some of the regulations that, you know, that talk about which kids can take classes and which high schools were able to be flexed, then somebody comes up from Stafford to take that. If they need also a math class and there's room in a math class at the high school, they can pop in and get that math class, that credit transfers, and, you know, and they're okay. But there are weird regulations at the state level that, that get in the way of those things that, that actually fuel some of the registrating conversations for good, so.
And that's also, Stafford and Essex Tech also offer students the possibility of taking a diesel course or an armor course, but also while they're in those buildings, also getting math credits, English credits, social studies credits, so they can be there all day and continue their high school careers, but they can have the coursework that they need.
I just wanted to point out on our draft work plan that we targeted a Hannaford Career Center budget presentation, just so you've noticed that. And it'd be wonderful if we could do it in December, so.
Nicole's got the roadshow scheduled already, so I think she's planning on.
Okay, awesome, awesome.
If you haven't passed that date on to her, I'm sure she would be willing to accommodate that.
Matt could probably do that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next is our CPAC. Suzanne, Mary Heather, is there anything to report?
So we met on the 8th of September. And it was basically Dr. Baker, Suzanne, myself, Dr. Colzano, and Dr. Awkely.
Abe Fline.
Abe Fline, thank you, sorry. With the chairs of CPAC, Mary Slazar and Jen Thompson. And really, just to kind of introduce everyone to one another, since we have a couple of new staff. So Dr. Abe Fline and Dr. Colzano went over their focus areas. Colazo, sorry. Yeah, I kept saying Colzano, didn't I? Sorry, my apologies. Colazo went over focus areas, kind of what their goals are for this academic year. And really, the rest of the discussion kind of centered around, you know, how CPAC and ACSD admin can work together. What's the best, most effective way for CPAC to be a good resource for both the admin and families? And so then we kind of talked about like mapping out meetings for the rest of the year. What they're proposing is to do like a joint CPAC and admin meeting sometime in October, hopefully to offer kind of like Special Ed 101 to families. And then kind of alternate every other month with sort of a more parent-only meeting so that parents have kind of a safe place to come and just talk about their experiences going through the special education process or, you know, what they need to be able to get an evaluation for their student struggles that they're having, those sorts of things. In January, February, again, sort of a joint meeting proposed around some kind of topic. A topic could be around just, you know, the evaluation process or some other kind. The topic could be around just, you know, the evaluation process, or some other common topic that's relevant for families. March, they're planning non-Diversity Week events. April would be again a parent-only. And some of the questions that we had just walking away from that meeting are like how to make sure, how the CPAC can bring themes or concerns that come up during these parent-only meetings back to administration. And, you know, really looking at what parents want, and how to work with the district to get, you know, what their kids need. So, I don't know if you guys wanted to add anything to that? Okay.
Sounds good. Sounds like the next step that we wanted to make a long time ago.
Yeah, yeah, it was a good conversation.
It was good. Unfortunately, we did have to cut it short, because we had meetings.
We had another meeting to attend.
I think that's a really nice approach.
I look forward to hearing more about that. Next up is Middlebury Community TV, last week.
BSBA.
Oh God, I did it again. BSBA update.
BSBA, so we have the regional meeting coming up September 30th, it's 5:30 to 7:30. It's a web Zoom. You do need to register for that. And there's different, it's actually a regional meeting that's across the state, so you register by your region, and when you log in, they'll put you in your correct region. You'll do, you'll vote on representatives, and then they'll bring everyone back out of the individual rooms, and they'll have some presentations. So that's the 30th, which is next Tuesday, believe it or not. And then on the 23rd is the annual meeting, it's online. Hopefully, it runs a little smoother than last year. Had a lot of boards that weren't really sure who their representative was and who their representative wasn't. And so there was people that were let into the meeting and they had some bumps out because they weren't really the representative, so let's hope everyone registers correctly this time. And then the BSBA annual conference was moved to Burlington. So, it's October 29th, which is a Wednesday night, so there's a dinner and whatnot, and then it looks like they're going to have some more student work being shown. And then the next day is the full day of the annual conference. Is that the DoubleTree by Hilton in Burlington? I am planning on going up for the dinner portion. I'm not sure if I'll be able to attend the daytime, but I do know for BSBA members, they're giving us a Zoom link, so that will be interesting. So, that's what's going on with the BSBA. They have been very busy also along, following all the different committees, tracking down who's on what base, and which bases move forwards or move backwards. So we get an awful lot of information that comes through us from there.
Okay. And I really, you know, if you can at all swing it, I really do recommend the conference. It's very informative and good presentations, and if you could be there in person, it's great, because you can network. And in fact, two years ago, I met Wilker there, the superintendent of Menusky, who was there for our opening day, and happened to have dinner with him, and his board. And it was that, you know, I was just so amazed with him. And he remembers me, you know, whenever we're at the same place. So, it's a great opportunity, you know, to just be able to meet folks from other boards and talk to them and see what's going on. Next up is, just real briefly, the MCTV Board Dinner Meet last week. And the main thing I want to mention is, because of the fact that Comcast, their funding, much of the funding comes from Comcast, but because Comcast's subscribership is getting smaller because of, you know, the internet fiber, that kind of thing, their funding is getting smaller, right? And they do a major service for ACSD board meetings, that kind of thing, and we haven't been a contributor. The town of Middlebury does, and I think it's around 6,000 or something a year that they provide. So, I know Kurt is going to reach out to Dr. Baker and talk to her, and potentially this may show up in the Finance Committee as something that we may want to include in our budget.
It probably wouldn't show up in the Finance Committee, except in a, you know...
Oh, okay, okay.
Just as a process, like, we would build that in, you know, as an infrastructure cost, if it feels like that's something that they would need to do, because they service operations as well as governance. So, when it would show up is December 8th, when we have the first round of the budget, and then, you know, those pieces would come up. Finance Committee would get that right before that.
Okay, right.
That makes sense.
Thank you. Thank you for the correction there.
Just orientation.
Yep. Okay, next up is our second public comment period. Is there any community that would like to make a public comment in the room or online? Okay, we have one in the room. So, go ahead, I'm going to limit you to the three minutes.
That's fine, I'll start my timer too.
Thank you.
My name is Mary Slazar, I'm from Leebridge. I'm here today to just raise something. I sent a note about this to the Policy Committee, and was hoping that I could go to their meeting tomorrow, but I cannot, so I wanted to make a public comment tonight. I want to ask the Policy Committee and the Board to reflect on what your intentions are behind the C nine wellness policy. I was very much a part of the conversations that led to that policy being adopted, and my understanding was that the intention was that our schools would not be using recess time as leverage to get compliant behavior from our students. And we have at least one school that is still doing that, and they believe they are compliant with the policy. And there's some room for interpretation in there, because it says recess cannot be withheld or denied. The intention was recess time, and so I can see somebody might think they're being compliant if they're not taking away an entire recess, but they are taking away recess time. So I would like to invite the Board to please clarify what your intention is, and if you indeed meant time, maybe amend the policy so that all of our schools can be more compliant. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. And next on our agenda is our board reflections. And at this time, is there anyone that would like to make a reflection?
This is very interesting to hear during the Hannaford Career Conversation and Update. You know, there's definitely an interest, it seems like, in flexibility outside of the district to help fill buildings and meet programmatic needs. And I'll be really curious, I know it's on our work plan October 27th, to see if there's that same interest when we start to talk about the C thirty policy, and if there's as much interest in those types of conversations, not only outside of the district, but within the district. And I'll just be curious to see how that goes.
And go ahead, Jess.
I just wanted to, again, reflect and express gratitude about the hesitation about Murray Hogan and all the work that went into that. I thought it was awesome, and just really easy to digest. And also want to appreciate our member of the public who's been here since, right after the first public comment period. Wow, thank you.
Perseverance, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, next up is adjournment.
Move to adjournment.
Okay, thank you guys.